Call order, the city council work session for the city of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, November 9th, 2021 is now five o'clock with city clerk, please call.
Mayor Speaker.
Here.
Council President Mark Bolson.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reapel.
Here.
Council members, partners, others.
Here.
Dale Combs, Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers, Brian Larson.
Here. Does term quorum, we're gonna switch things around a little bit, we're gonna start with number two, request to host snowmobile races, and we have Corey here with us today. Do you wanna kinda explain what your ideas and what you're looking for, and then if people have questions, it can...
Okay, um, so, uh, my son is involved in a race circuit called KC Pro West, um, and they hold diff- hold races in different areas around the surrounding area, and they asked me if I was willing to host a race in East Grand Forks, um, and I said I'd give it a shot. Um, we're looking for a chunk of land that East Grand Forks would be willing to let us use for a weekend, it'd be a Saturday and Sunday race. Um, we would do all the work as set up, uh, the club would also put a blanket liability um, on the property for that weekend, so the city is not involved if anybody ever were to get hurt or anything like that, but we're just looking for someplace to hold it. Um, we, I talked to a few different people for some different ideas. Um, one of the main areas that was looked at was the boat landing down by the river, uh, because I was told the city also dumps snow there if we were on a year where we have a lack of snow, um, there'd be snow accessible there. Um, but we do the setup, uh, like the groomer, uh, I already talked to, I forget the organization that, um, does it, but the Polk County grooming, or groomers, they would be willing to groom the track for us. Uh, Andy Zaveral said he, if we needed to get some other equipment in here to move snow, he would be willing to help out with that also. So...
You're looking to do this, what, January?
January 22nd and 23rd, and we'd probably set up the track Wednesday or Thursday of that week prior to the weekend.
How many people usually participate?
Uh, it varies, uh, there's a few different race circuits, so it all depends on what other race circuits are doing. Um, it could be, you know, the, well, racers, I'm guessing anywhere from 20 to 40 racers, um, and then the age group, I believe, is five to 14. So, no concessions, no alcohol, nothing like that, it's just, just looking for a piece of land to do it on. A couple other pieces of land I was looking at, um, I live, uh, up by the golf course on St. Andrews, there's also a couple pieces of property up there that might be suitable too, um, if you guys weren't interested in the boat landing. Um, we don't need a huge area, but bigger the area, the better, so, you know, usually make a couple different sized tracks, um, cause there's real little kids, so we'll do a small little oval for them, and then for the older kids, we'd like to, um, extend that a little bit further, for, a little further to ride with the kids with more experience.
I'm assuming you mean the land that's to the north, I mean, by the golf course.
Well, um, like, I live on, uh, on the north end of St. Andrews, there's a, there's a chunk of property, or open area to the east, um, and then also, um, that water diversion that goes there, that big ditch, there's also, I see you guys have just grassland in there too. Um, but we need something accessible too, to be able to get, um, trailers and vehicles in there to get close to it. Cause typically, we'll set up a track and then, um, we'll all back our trailers in surrounding the racetrack, so, um, like, family members, if it's cold, they can just look out the back of the trailers to watch. Um, it's not usually a big spectator sport, it's more, you know, the, it's families that show up there. So...
Tim?
Does that like the limit, like a 290 cc?
So, they, uh, the real small ones are a 120, um, and then in the same size snowmobile, they put a 206 Chant motor, um, and then we also have transitional sleds where they're, they're the bigger snowmobiles, but they're, they're tuned way down, they, they actually have to have a computer to, you know, make them not go very fast, so...
Bet the kids have a fun time doing that.
Yeah, yep, a friend of mine asked my son to go one time, and, uh, yeah, that's all it took, and he was hooked, so... But you, you'll get a lot of people from out of the area to come typically, they try and schedule these races, uh, but weather dependent, um, so it doesn't interfere with the other race circuits, so a lot of times you'll get people that'll travel down here from, you know, Minneapolis or Rainard, um, but that was a nice thing that appealed to East Grand Forks or Grand Forks is, uh, hotel rooms are easily accessible. So, uh, also puts on a race usually, we usually have a race at the casino in Thief River. Um, last year we didn't, I think it was because of snow, but typically we have a race in Crookston as well, um, Purram and Roseau. Um, just looking for new places to do it, and if it goes good, I'd like to do it every year, if possible.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, thank you for bringing this, I think it's great when people are bringing new attractions, bringing more people to town. Um, I think we have had snowmobile racing down in that area before, or at least they set it up, and I don't know if they got, got it canceled or whatever, but we've used that area for snowmobile racing before.
Okay.
So I don't really have a, a problem with that chunk, I'd, I would kinda work with staff to try to narrow down a couple spots, I think that, you know, the old lagoon spot is a great spot. Um, there's a pit, or a former pit on the north side of Red Lake River, that's kinda down in a hollow, or whatever, just off of Business Highway 2, that might, it's got a, it's city-owned property back there, that's, uh, that might be a nice spot, might give you some different trains and stuff like that, I don't know what you're looking for, but just, I, I would say work with staff to get this done. The only question I would have is, is this fall under kind of some of our event stuff, or are we, we're not far enough along with our event permitting, so it would go back to our old stuff, or?
Well, at this point, um, he has everything kind of taken care of, they just, uh, from what thing requested, they just wanna use the property, and they already have the, um, the group covering with liability, so I mean, as long as council gives approval to use the property, they don't need anything from staff, it doesn't sound like, we can work through that, but...
I mean, but we'd still, like, to use our property, we should go through the event process, right?
Yeah, and that will be coming back at the next work session, there were some checklist items that need to be addressed, but that will be put back for the next work session, so if we're working through this, we can kinda work through that process and use that new process.
Right, and what's the time of day that it's, I mean, is it...
So typically, we, temperature is also a factor, but typically, we start at like nine or 10 in the morning, and we're typically done, you know, somewheres between three and five.
Okay.
So, um, like, like, temperature wise, I say that is cause, um, depending on how size, what size the track is, but if it's really cold out, they'll cut the laps way down and we blow through it real fast, if it's nicer day, try and take advantage of the daylight as much as possible.
Yeah.
How do you configure these tracks? Um, I'm sure like Roseau and Thief River and use their fairgrounds.
Yep.
And they're typically kinda confined, so how do you configure the track, or the...
So typically, um, are, are you talking how to build, or how we come up with a plan of the direction?
Well, how it's, how it's, how it's built, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm the city attorney, so I'm looking at liability, and, and I understand indemnifications and all that, but sometimes they only cover so much.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious on...
So, as long as there's enough snow and we don't have to take it from a, like, last year, there was times where we had to take a very large area and take something and push it into a small area to get enough snow to make the track, but like, if you're hauling snow down there and there's a fair amount of snow, usually don't have to take it from very far, and, uh, the groomer has a big blade on the front, and they would just push it, make a few hills, you know, and level it off, it usually does not take very much effort to build the track. And then, like I said, because of the different age groups, a lot of times they'll, they'll make a real small one, whether it's oval or round, uh, with a few little humps on it, and then for the older kids, um, we'll have it blocked off with cones, so they have to stay within that, and then we'll, we'll just make that track a little bit bigger for the older kids, so they have a little further distance and more time on the track.
I guess I grew up in Roseau, so I'm used to, I'm going a bazillion miles an hour. I'm just, you know, so that's what I'm kinda was thinking about speed and somebody launching themselves off the end of the track, or...
But, I mean, they've been doing this for a long time, I don't know the ins and outs of their, um, insurance policy, but I'm sure I could get you a copy of that, um, but like I said, they, they blanket the whole thing, and this is the first race I've been, I have sponsored, um, but other people have done it, they're, they give them the insurance policy for that weekend, and they're good. So... Like I said, it's, it's new to me, um, but like, also, I'd, I'd like to keep doing it if it all works out, make it a yearly thing, or if it's good enough, maybe do it twice a year if you guys are willing. Um, it just, it's, it's a lot of fun, and with COVID being a problem, um, it's about the safest sport you can do out there, cause you're in helmets and face masks, and, I mean, it's not like being on the basketball court and, you know, sweating on each other, and, you know what I mean? It's, it's a nice...
Sure, no, I'm more, how fast were they, how is it contained?
Yep.
Those types of things, and I can, I can call Oslo, or I could call the city of Crookston and get some information.
Well, you're from Roseau, another, um, he's no longer president, but he's very, um, very good person, I call for, um, information, but, uh, Tony Wenzloff, he was the president. Um, when I have questions, I usually call him, cause he's been part of the club for a long time, if you're familiar with who he is.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mayor. Um, first of all, yeah, to echo Mark's idea of bringing it here, and what a great idea, I think it's really a good idea. Um, for the location, if it could be in that area, along where the boat launch is, or railroad tracks in the, in that Griggs Park, I think that's an ideal location, if I think, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say.
Andy, Andy Zaveral, I don't, he, he's the one, he was the one that really thought that was a great idea for being, um, the terrain, I've never been down there, I've driven through just a little bit, but he's just like, you know, we could also go a little further out, make a, he just thought it was a great place to do it.
Yep. And I think if you're there as a family, and you're gonna have a little break between races, you don't wanna, like, well gee, where do I go? Cause I can see it from here, I can see Cabela's, I can see the movie theater, I can see the restaurants, having participated in a lot of like kids hockey tournaments and stuff, if you're getting your car driving miles, you don't maybe even know where you're going in an unfamiliar town, and this is the whole idea of having a downtown district like we have, is to bring all this stuff together, the event, plus all the other stuff that supports the event, this is right there.
Yep. And, and I've thought about that over, over time too, is, you know, the accessibility with trailers and stuff on the edge of town would be nicer, but like you said, if they get a little break, cause depending on how many classes your kid's in, you know, sometimes you'll have a three hour break, well, they could go down to the Blue Moose and get lunch while they're waiting, you know what I mean?
Yep.
That's a pretty open area down there.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of space for parking trailers in that.
Yep, they're used to trucks and boat trailers and stuff, so there's room down there.
Yeah.
Cool, that's all I got.
Johnson?
So you have to provide porta potties?
Um, yes, at the races, uh, the club does hire somebody to bring in porta potties.
And we don't need to have an ambulance or first responders down there, or you got...
Um, I believe that is all set up with the club. Um, I know in, in the past, um, they don't actually have an ambulance down there, usually they hire a EMT with a bag that sits at the races, that is getting paid by the club, and then if for some reason they need an ambulance, they'll call in an ambulance after that, but there will be a EMT on site.
AMI, Mr. Demers?
Sorry, um, like, when you're done with these, do you guys go and like, reverse groom them then, or like, do you just leave them? I'm just wondering, I can, I don't know what the track looks like, but if it's got a bunch of hoop deez or whatever in it, and all of a sudden...
If, if you guys would want that, we could sure do that, but most of the time, they just leave them and let the snow melt, you know?
Okay.
Cause usually, next time it snows or blows, it's all leveled off again anyway.
And just, and this isn't necessary for you guys, but kinda, for Megan, as we do these events, like cleanup should be part of the, whether it's requires a deposit or something, like, we should make sure that there's a cleanup plan, or responsible person for cleanup.
And that would probably, that would probably fall under me and not the club, since I'm, I'm sponsoring it, so this, this will cost me out of pocket, I gotta give the club, um, eighteen hundred or eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, I can go out and get sponsors to help with that, um, but that's part of the hosting, um, so I would assume they would require me, if there was a deposit, it'd be, it would fall back on myself.
AMI, else have any questions, or? No, just work with the staff, and I think, hopefully it turns out, and you're able to hold it, and...
Yep.
That's good.
Um, should, I mean, just, I guess, I, when I first came here, I was thinking that we were gonna have to, you know, come up with a couple different spots, but as long as you guys are good with it down there, I think that's what we'll go with, you know, and if we don't get any snow, well, then most likely it'll just be pushed off, or, um, come back and ask for a later date or something.
Sure. I appreciate it.
We'll be as flexible as we can, cause that's a, it's gonna be a nice event.
Yep, so you guys are all good with having a yearly thing if it, everything pans out?
As long as the mayor rides, I can ride.
My, 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 my son would just assume it'd be every weekend, but...
Yeah, that's cool, very cool.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go back to number one, the Wave Academy presentation, Ms. Larson.
Hello, thanks for having me here again, I look around the room, and I think most of you have heard my spiel, and have seen my slides, so I don't want to be too redundant, but, um, just in, maybe catching up a few things and, and getting everybody else up to speed with what we have going on at, at the high school. So we are in year two of what we call our Wave Academy, uh, and kind of our little catch line is why I just planned to graduate, when you can graduate with the plan. Um, I'll give you a little idea of what the rollout and all of that is, but basically the background is, looking at what we are offering our kids, has been kind of the same old, same old for a lot of years, and really needing to collaborate with businesses and our community to say, our kids are staying here anyway, so why aren't we all investing in our future workforce here, and, and having the high school be kind of that starting point. Mark had just asked if it was ever gonna go back to maybe even a middle school age, and right now, we're in year two, so I look at, Sean Murphy would be in our, you know, premier class of who started this, and so they've been in ninth grade, 10th grade, we'll move it all the way up to their senior year, and then we certainly have talked about moving it back into more of the middle school years. Uh, I had first heard about this with Hutchinson, Minnesota, and it was really their economic development, the city, and then the, the superintendent of the schools that really got it going, and it's going, it's amazing what they're doing, and it's really caught on around the state, uh, in looking at schools similar size, Detroit Lakes is into their year three, actually year four, but they held their year one and continued it for another year, cause they weren't quite ready to move on. We don't want that to happen to us, we're hoping for big things and can move into our year three, and, and still feel like, even though we're not, I don't think we'll ever feel like we are arrived, that it's gonna be in a journey that just keeps going, and, um, I think we've used the adage of it, you know, throw it against the wall, if it sticks, we'll do it again next year, and then keep going with kind of best practice. So, but it is definitely a key word, collaboration. Uh, as I've looked at it and been working on it the last couple of years, I'm just realizing I'm in over my head in very many ways, and so, um, really needing it to be a buy-in from all of us, and seeing how can we all get together to kinda do this for our students. So, small learning environments at the high school, with really kids doing the work of finding out what they all, what they are about, and then figuring out how that's gonna fit into the community. So, what we want our East Grand Forks to look like is having earned a diploma, and we are a leader in Minnesota, we have a high percentage of kids that graduate from high school here, we'd like to continue that, but had some sort of work-based experience, or a capstone project while they're in high school. We have not been doing that for very many of our kids. The Carl Perkins money for tech ed work went away a long time ago, and the focus in Minnesota has really been the post-secondary education options, which I'm not dismissing, that a lot of our kids, including my own, uh, have, have earned a lot of college credits through that, and have done great things, but those kids kind of find their way sometimes themselves. Um, I always use my son as an example, that went to college, always planned on doing that, but he also had a sixteen thousand dollar semester of thinking he was gonna be a drone pilot, and deciding he absolutely hated flying, so that was an expensive mistake, that wouldn't that have been cool to have figured out before that happened. So, and then we're hoping that they have some sort of skill certification and college costs that are covered during this time, and then have a post-high school plan. Um, an example of skill certification, we have a business class, and he wants to make sure, you know, cause the high school is a lot of Google-based things and MacBooks, and that's not really what industry is asking us to have, and so he's doing the whole work office, what am I thinking, work, uh...
Microsoft.
Microsoft Office, and asked about the certification to that, it's expensive. Park Construction said, we'll come in and we'll, we'll pay for it this year, so that kind of a thing to help us get that certification in for our kids, so that's pretty cool. Um, the other piece would be, we have Northland that might be coming in and doing CNA, or uh, first aid CPR, Zaveral's has been working with us on OSHA certifications, so trying to get those things in place, so kids have some work-based certification. Why now? It's like, why not now? We are long overdue for it. The more I hear about what others are doing, it's like, oh my gosh, like, I wish my kids could have been in on something like this back when they were there, and I look around, and a lot of you have had kids there, and probably would say the same thing. We have about sixty percent of our kids that say they're going on to college, twenty-five percent of the jobs in Northwest Minnesota require a college degree, and only eighty percent require only a high school diploma. So I think the college kids are gonna find their way, and I know, Ron, we talked about that at one of the last meetings, this is not poo-pooing college at all, but it's saying, let's figure out what it is that you want as a career, and then let's figure out what your pathway is to get there, and if that means an apprenticeship, that means two years of college, four years of college, or beyond, then cool, then that's what you go for, but keeping in mind that when we send all of our kids on to college, a lot of them aren't completing that, and they're amassing a lot of student debt. So again, just some stats to throw out there about college debt and the amount that borrows, we all kinda know that, as parents, our kids paying things back, and, and sometimes paying more than what their job is probably paying them in the first place. So the whole idea is career pathways, Minnesota has had this little career wheel forever that's microscopically read, but you do have a slide, so we've kind of taken the foundation of what Minnesota already did with, with this wheel, and have divided our high school into some sort of a cluster-based, so their second year, the world, the ninth grade, they're looking at this whole world of work, and then they're moving into, uh, sophomore year of picking some clusters within this. So currently, and I think that this is something that's a fluid thing, uh, is that we have a health and human service pathway, we have the business entrepreneurship communications, and then we have what we call STEAM, adding the arts in there, some communities would say that's agriculture for the A, um, the M is math, but we also would probably throw in manufacturing in there, those are things that all fit into that. So our sophomores all picked one of those pathways to go into this year, one of those clusters, and they are taking a semester class this fall, um, ideally, that would be a year-long class, but we thought, let's build it and wish we had more time, rather than, especially coming off of COVID, throwing a whole year class and having the teacher spin as they try to figure out how to fill it in, plus, we don't have those partnerships with our community built yet, and so I, I see that that will grow, but this year, it's a semester, and then the second semester, they will pick a class that, uh, that complements what they took this fall, so something within that cluster range that we are designating. So those are our three areas this year, and then each, each year, as the freshmen are moving into the sophomore year, we'll look and evaluate and say, is that how it's best working for us? Um, we have been doing youth science, which is a program that looks at career aptitude data, and I didn't include this slide in the one I showed most of you before, and kinda looked at what our kids have, and you can look at what the girls are in the purple or blue, and the boys are in the red. Uh, a lot of times, kids look at those, this is what their aptitude showed that they were good at, and that's usually a better indicator than interest. Interest can change over time, aptitudes are usually the things that already they've developed by the time they get into their ninth and 10th grade years, and I think part of it comes down to, again, of, they can't be what they don't see. So when we're looking at picking careers, um, how does a girl know that she wants to be in a STEM activity when they really haven't been exposed to that much, or it wasn't that cool to do that? So now we can show them the things that they can be doing, and, and letting them figure out their way with what they can see. So, how it works so far, a journey, um, I kinda talked about the freshman seminar, which is a ninth grade class taught by a teacher who really looks at a relationship with kids, and having tying in how school relates to the whole world of work, and why this, why you're taking geometry, and what that's gonna mean for your future, and ties in the piece that we want you here, and we want you to figure yourself out. Um, we are working on right now, getting those industry field trips put in for the second half of this, of this semester, the kids just finished the Northern Valley Career Expo, which, you know, Mark and I were just talking about, and some of you have been too, Paul plays in, you know, a big role in that. Um, doing some really in-depth career exploration, we've had a ton of speakers, and already, our city has represented our kids well, we've had former students as firefighters come in, um, you know, they're, it's just been amazing what, we're calling on some of our graduates to come in and put a real face as to like, I was sitting here in this school, and now this is how I figured out, and my path here wasn't a direct line from graduating to being a firefighter, but this is why I went into it, and this is why I'm still in this community. I would say, and you guys know this, I, we're at between eighty to ninety percent of our kids that stay in this town, they don't venture too far. When I ask them at their, beginning of their senior year where they're gonna go, um, it's usually as far away from here as possible, and by the time they graduate, our kids are staying here, or even coming back, they maybe are going and getting educated somewhere, like chiropractic school, and still have dreams of coming back here when they're done with that. Pathway Seminar would be next year, we want all of our kids to job shadow, so when we're comparing our career academy to ones around the region, we're wall-to-wall. We are, every kid in our school, from, um, special ed to every single student is covered under the, the Wave Academy. Other towns like Bemidji are doing it on a, um, on a request, you don't have to, they're encouraging you, and they've been very successful with that too, they have a very successful program, but it's not wall-to-wall, and I, I think a school our size, we can, we can be serving them all, and getting them way further than what they were, when, you know, our, my kids would have graduated or yours. So eleventh grade kids are, a lot of them are starting the college classes, and it's always hard for those kids that say, well, I must be dumb, cause I don't qualify for those college classes, and it's like, oh my gosh, we need to be, those are the kids, those are the kids. Every year, I have a kid that's been acting up, has been just like, what are we gonna do with these kids? They've done everything, they've taken every gym class they've had, and they're gonna take shop again in a gym class, and they don't have any way to apply it, and we've put them, Zaveral's, for an example, took one of those kids a couple years ago, and it's like, I almost wanted to apologize, he's been amazing, he was amazing out there, he wa, he was insightful, he found his, he knew what he wanted to do, and we didn't see behavior problems with that. We've had kids go take technical classes over at Northland, and it was, we had to get rid of the program, cause it was too expensive, but cause it was things that we don't have at the high school, and they, those, those kids weren't acting up there, because they were hands-on, and they were doing the things that they wanted to do, instead of feeling like a loser, so it, that's where we wanna take this, and every year, I say, this is why this program needs to work, cause we have those kids. Uh, and then the senior year, hopefully getting college credits, internships, certifications, maybe working with some business in industry on some sort of capstone project, so, some cool stuff, hopefully. So again, the cut rollout's kind of the same thing, we are in year two, so we're at the sophomore level, by next year, we need to get to those job shadowings for every single student. Um, I'll, you know, we'll start with what kind of things do you wanna shadow, I'll try to set those up, but it sure would be nice to have, you know, a rolodex of sorts, um, that students, like, they'll come in and we'll set that up, and we'll send them off, and then working towards their senior year. Really working on the soft skills, we are working on character development, soft skills, so that when you get our graduates in your programs, they're gonna say, wow, they came in there, they know how to shake a hand, and they know how to show up for work beyond time, and do all those things, so we gotta have, we kinda set up our ten commandments, I think we can use that word in school, but, um, that's kinda borrowed from Detroit Lakes and have added on our own things. So, what now? And this is where, like, I'm kinda stuck, I need help. Um, we are transforming the high school experience, so we, we changed to an eight-period day, modified block, gave teachers chances for labs... So we changed to an eight-period day, modified block, gave teachers chances for labs, time for getting out into the industry, things like that. We're, you know, looking at that, looking how we can change our facilities, change things around. Again, my, my thing I really want to focus on here is we're working together to foster our future talent to live, work, and play in our community and region. How are all those things? It, it takes all of us, it takes the village, but that's really the goal. We're transforming teaching and learning. Right now, I'm in the process of setting up advisory boards for each of those, those committees. I talked with Kevin Hatcher, Water and Light, at our Career Expo and he called back and said, I thought about it all weekend. I've thought about this career academy. And he said, I just love this idea and I want to be on one of the, one of the, one of the advisory boards. And he said, I have somebody here who's an accountant that would love to come and serve on your business one and, you know, here's all sorts of ways you can use us. That's the kind of excitement that I'm hearing, you know, even from, you know, Mark and I talk to. So transforming how we do things. We need those advisory boards to have people like you that are out working and saying, yeah, you shouldn't really be teaching that anymore because that's really antiquated. We had one of our business teachers come back from DC where they just said, they're totally changing how banking and finance is going to be done with all the Bitcoin and all of that. And how do we stay on the cutting edge so that our kids are best trained for real world? So relevant, real world, realistic, rigorous, relational, all those things that make a kid want to stay in school and stay in our community. And then basically the last piece is we need to transform our community. How do we get involved? How do we, how do I do this? How do I move it forward so that this is a reality and it's going to happen? Kids are excited about it. I hear parents say, man, it's so fun to hear our kids come home from Dane Chono's freshman seminar class saying, man, this is, you know, this is what we talked about in school instead of, what did you learn in school today? Nothing. They're actually have those pieces about, do you know, well, Dave, you could say that about Sean. He kind of came home freaked out about the job I want doesn't pay enough for all the things I want to be able to do and kind of that reality is setting in ninth grade and saying, like, what, like, what? And but yet that's a piece of reality and it's relevant and it's, those are the things that, yeah, we shouldn't take getting to college and saying, yeah, I can't really afford the occupation I picked kind of thing. So and how do I, I say help because it is a help. Looking at the advisory boards, we need businesses to be guest speakers. Internships are when a teacher goes out into business and industry and learns from you. Get us on your site so we can see what you're offering. I have used the Northern Valley Machine as an example. I've used the fact that I've been here, been in this community for, I don't know, 35, six years and had never set foot on American Crystal until last year. Brian Laura has lived here his whole life, said, I've never been on American Crystal until this last year. They brought us through that. I had no idea that they had a nurse on site and all the different occupations. It's like, that's what our kids need to hear. And how do we do that if we don't see it ourselves? So getting our teachers out into the businesses, host student, faculty, industry tours, get us out to your place, helping us with mock interviews, job shadows. I need help with branding, branding, marketing. Those are all things kind of new to me, very new to me. Senior internship sponsorships, that whole gamut of things. I need it all. Now, how do I do it? I don't know. So where do we go from here? I guess it's really nice, you know, Mark has called with his bank and just getting me exposure to people, getting me out to places that we can serve on our advisory boards to say, so that you're just working maybe just with the business one and say, well, hey, have you thought of doing this? Or, you know, getting our alumni back to speak to our kids. The guest speaker things have gone over well, panels. We've had to kind of live on that because we haven't been able to get out to places. But it sounds, even Sanford had put together a whole after-hours career fair for us that got postponed because of COVID. But how do we do that with an American Crystal that doesn't let someone under age of 18 onsite? But lots of ways that we need you. And I guess I'm open to questions and next steps and also just calling me or getting in touch with me. Having me speak to your business. We've already done that with Water and Light. I'll be going over there. So that's nice for a city involvement.
I think one of the biggest things, you know, I know we've talked a little bit and things that we do at work, my job, and things that we want to do in the community and the schools, you know, and I think there's, you know, as we spoke last time, we had a little get-together about how many jobs are actually in a banking financial institution that people don't see, you know? And I talked about, you know, our largest branch right now is our virtual branch, which is people who work in the back rooms. You don't see it from any, I mean, there's so many different areas that you don't realize. But also there's, you know, opportunities to get them onsite and yes, banking is changing in many ways, you know, like every other industry, but it's, there's so many opportunities for people that even businesses in the town that people never see, they, they're there, they drive by, but they don't know what goes on in there. And you've mentioned that. And I think that city, we've mentioned, talked before, the city should, you know, be part of that and say that, hey, you know, we have all these departments within our city. Maybe there's opportunities for us to do internships or job shadowing and, you know, from city administrator to public works, to wastewater, to working with police and fire departments, you know, and, you know, just different things. So I think there's a lot of opportunities that we could be partners with. So.
I don't think we can do it without you, actually. We can't.
Mayor.
I, I think, I'm so glad you're here and presenting this because this really is, it's a city thing. It's not a school thing. And when we do it right, it's a benefit to every part of our city. It's a benefit to the kids, the parents who maybe have their kids finding a good way from an earlier time. I mean, the kids find a good way, but would you rather they do it in ninth grade, get started? Or would you rather they start maybe two years into college, kind of wake up and say, whoa, could've, would've, should've, like you talked about with your son? I did some of that same thing when I was in college, two years of, you know, had kind of an idea, but I didn't really know as clean as I should have been how to attack it and how to go at it. So I think it is really important to start this from an early age. And on the city side of it, I think we're going to be able to help a lot with the business partnerships that you're looking for through our EDA, also with our connections, too, with the Chamber of Commerce, which you guys have some of that already going. But anything we can help to facilitate that, we're definitely going to be willing to help with that. And I liked something you said earlier, in addition to guiding, you said it actually when we met a month or so ago. You know, not only do you guide them to a good curriculum for them early on, but when they get out into a business and that business says, you know, you're going into the construction trade, I'm making up an example, or maybe it was your example, you need to be able to do Excel spreadsheet. And now all of a sudden they come back in the classroom and Excel spreadsheet is way more interesting to them because, oh, I need it.
Their relevance.
Yeah, it's not just theoretical, I really need this. So they're hungry for it. Now they sit back down and they just attack it and learn it way quicker. So that's.
Now you remember that from my first presentation. That's impressive.
Yeah, that's cool. And I think that can happen a lot in a lot of different ways.
The other thing I want to mention is that Grand Forks has approached us, you know, they have the Impact Academy that it's on the newspaper every day. And it's amazing and there's a lot of communities that are doing big things, big buildings like that. And Eric Ripley came and met with Superintendent Colness and Brian Laura, our principal, and myself a couple of weeks ago and just kind of feeding, feeling us out as to where we see ourselves. And if you had asked me at one of the last couple of meetings, I would say, I don't know, like, we didn't think that we belonged to there or that we could. But that door is opened in terms of, it's a river that divides, so we are talking two different states and we're not exactly sure how that can work. But definitely don't want to poo-poo the idea of being able to use, utilize their state-of-the-art facilities. But what I think what we're doing that's, that is different is that we have some programming. We have the programming behind it. We're not a building, we're a program. And some of those other things might come, like I think in our construction trades this next year, they want to build a tiny house. They've built it now from a shed to the tiny house thing and they'll be doing the whole architecture piece of that. Some schools have found their little niche and that's what, exactly what they've been doing and have made it into an industry. And I don't know if that's where we'll be or not, but I, maybe. We'd also like to see a community service piece to that where they buy into that, if I'm part of a community, I give back. So whether Sherlock Park becomes our thing because we had a hand in building that years ago or there's some other need, but kind of that you see us doing, giving things back as well as receiving, so.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Demers, questions, comments?
Just was wondering, you know, you talked about Hutch and Detroit Lakes has got a good program going. Are there specific things that their cities or their utilities are doing? Like specific examples of what they, is there funding opportunities? Is there, you know, specific actions that they're taking at the city level to promote these or what should we be doing? Like, what's the action that we should take out?
Thank you. That's a good segue into this because I'm always told, don't shake your hand and then reach for your wallet. But, okay, you kind of opened that door. We don't have the sponsorship piece set up yet. Bemidji started off with the sponsorship. They said, we have this great idea. People bought into the idea and they're like, okay, do you want to have this level, this level, this level? You walk into their atrium and it would show, you know, what level you contributed to. And that total, that project totally funds itself. They don't use school dollars for their academy. Again, it's not wall-to-wall and it doesn't have as much of the programming piece. So at some point, obviously some sponsorships are going to have to be a piece. We can't do this without that. We need even in-kind things. A business is getting rid of their 3D printer and they'll say, it still works great, but we're moving on to this. Do you have a need for it? So looking at that kind of thing. We've had kids already going out to, you know, Zavrels to do, use the ladders and do some of that with some of the certifications. So it's that kind of a partnership as well. So where we go from here, I think, is finding out where you are at as each business and how you see yourselves fitting into our dream, our community dream. And then how do we work together to, you know, and it'll be different. And again, maybe we're taking baby steps now. Maybe some of you have some great ideas as to, I think you should go right into the sponsorship thing or I think you should write, you know, that's where I need direction as to where do we, how, where do we go? It's, it's big and it, yeah, I need help with that.
Hey, Mel, do you have any questions?
I guess I would toss in two cents. I'd say I'd go sponsorship sooner than later, especially since you already have a program running. It's not just a dream. I mean, you've got students already in the hopper, you know, progressing through. So I feel like you could go to the sponsorship piece anytime and then it would start to take off because you.
So maybe we need like even an advisory board that's just for the overall academy and that each of the clusters could have one, too. So we've got those visionaries that are saying, we're your dream team and we'll help you get that part of it organized. So I'll add that to that because I think there is an umbrella that fits over even the other ones. And if there's people that have that business know-how or know how to structure that, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Can Mel say anything?
I'll just end by saying that I can say that my son is very firmly in the STEAM camp because the one that he, the only one he really found interesting and he's, the other ones just looked boring to him.
Cool. Nice to know.
I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you again. I know a lot of you've heard it twice, but I hope that you look at things in the community in a different way to say, oh, maybe that would work. And you can be like Kevin Hatcher who said, thought about it all weekend. You know, so, yeah, thanks a lot.
Thanks. Appreciate it. We'll move on to number three, request to purchase patrol SUV. Chief Headland.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hope I'm not putting the cart before the horse here, but I guess in a little bit of way I am. We've typically waited to make requests to purchase large capital items until the budget's been finalized, but with, you're all, I think, well aware of the situation with vehicles in the country right now. We were even advised by, recommended by our supplier that we put in our request to get our vehicle ordered earlier. For our capital improvement plan in 2022, we have just one squad car scheduled to be replaced. And so basically I'm requesting to get authorization, assuming that, you know, I guess I'm assuming that we're going to get the one vehicle in the final budget and we'd like to get that ordered now just so we can hopefully get it a little bit quicker. It's, I think the longer we wait, the further out into 2022 it's going to actually be.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to people who've ordered in January and they still haven't got their vehicles. I've talked to people who ordered in May and they're hopefully going to get them next month, but, so it just varies.
Yeah, very much so. And they said it could be as little as 20 weeks. They said many vehicles, I shouldn't say many, but they said a number of vehicles are taking a full year to get, but they anticipated it would probably be about 20 weeks for a squad car.
A lot of the communities are doing this from what I've been reading.
And that's what I, that's part of my worry and one of the reasons I brought it forward now because the more they jump on board and do that, if we wait, it puts us that much further down the road.
Anybody have any questions for Chief Headland?
I have one.
Mayor.
On the year where you've done one squad vehicle, that's a year where you've done some additional technology purchases or other things to sort of level out your budget. Are you going to be doing that for next year?
I don't have my capital improvement request with me, but we don't have a lot that's due for next year, just in our, and of course, for normal replacement, there's not much that's due right now. We're, we're pretty up to speed, I believe, another year, it's, I think it's one year out further is when we will be doing the body cams and in-car videos again. But we're still able to get those covered under our extended warranty that we've been paying for each year. That's worked well and it's, it's able to push out the larger expense a little bit longer. And as long as they're still willing to do that for us, its watch guard is the company that we use for both of those and it's, it's been good equipment for us. And if we have one go down, they replace it, no questions asked. It's been, it's been, I think, worth the money we've spent for the extended warranty each year. We just, we have renewed each year so far. I think we're eligible for one more year after this.
Thank you.
Can Mel say anything? Mr. Demers.
Do you have to pay anything upfront or is it?
No.
Okay. And then is this the, the squad that has had the electrical problems or?
No, that one hasn't been perfect, but it has largely seems to have resolved itself. Once in a blue moon, we still have had an issue with, but very rarely. The one that we'd be replacing now is our sedan. That, at this point in time, will be our highest mileage vehicle and our oldest. It's probably the least driven because it's a smaller vehicle, so a lot of the officers don't necessarily like that size. That's, we're going to be switching to another SUV.
Get her done.
Can Mel say anything? See you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Move on to the one-minute synopsis of Mr. Goldsted. Consider right-of-way management ordinance.
Thank you. This is the model right-of-way, or right-of-way management ordinance that's been requested. I've been in contact with all of the departments, Nancy, Keith Micklesith, and engineering have submitted it. And I would like any comments from anybody else if there's anything else that seems to be needed. I didn't number each section at this point. That's why there's a couple of blanks in here, depending upon where we would put it in the ordinance. Right now, I've got it under the streets and sidewalks. There's been some suggestions by engineering to put any of the, the plates in an addendum for, excuse me, an appendix under A so that they're a part of the ordinance. I have no issues with that. And it also covers the, the small cell wireless that's, that get attached to the poles and in the right-of-ways. So that's kind of a, it, it covers all of it, excavations, anything that's going into the utility easements in the city, and it's all under one ordinance.
Do you may have any questions or comments for Mr. Gallstead on this?
One minute?
Oh, no.
I have to ask something. Just to catch me up here, what do we have in place now and what's, what's led us to have to formalize this certain document?
Right now, it's kind of piecemeal, what we have, and it all kind of goes through planning and zoning and then the permitting process. And so what we're trying to do is designate it all in one place so that we have different corridors if it's necessary, if they're congested, if it's, and then also which on top of that is that with all the small cell wireless, we want to make sure that we have that tied up for, for us when the time comes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to number five, discussion on tax abatement program. Mr. Gorty.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are actually two items that are related. First is approval of the abatements for the people who paid their taxes this year and are participating in the program. That's an annual thing. We hold a public hearing and that's set for your action next week. And included is the amount, number of recipients and the dollars involved. The second thing is the program itself is up for renewal. We last renewed it so that it extends to homes that are ready for, ready for occupancy by December 31 of 2021. This will extend the program for another five years. But just to make something very clear, it takes about four years for homes to cycle through the process from the time that they, from the time that they are completed, the house is completed in 2021. Next year, in 2022, the taxes won't be paid on a full, as if it were fully constructed, they'll be paid on a partial construction or a raw land, or a raw lot. The next year, in 2023, it may come up to full value. People will pay their taxes that year and then they'll get the rebate in 2024. And for the second year of the program, the same thing happens one year down the line. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear for everybody. That's how the program operates. I talked to the school district last night. They had one question. They said, what do we need to make this happen? So I would ask that you approve it and extend the program. When we talked to the realtors, when we were evaluating the programs, the incentive programs that the city had, the realtors said this was the best program that we could have.
What about the county?
I'm sorry?
Have you talked to the county?
The county will want a copy of the resolution from the city and the school district before they move forward. That's the same as last time. And I, we do not anticipate, I do not anticipate any difficulties at the county.
Anybody have any questions? See you none, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Number six, review updates to development agreement. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is before the council due to a couple of reasons. One is the development agreement that we currently have been using is really kind of out of date as far as current conditions, current laws, those types of things. And so in the most recent development that we've had, we kind of pieced together one and negotiated a development agreement with the McBroder Acres out there. And I think it went pretty well. And so we worked with staff, city, city attorney Ron Gallstead and the Kennedy and Graven Law Firm, plus we consulted with similar-sized cities to amend and update our development agreement. So the, I guess, the, what we have before you tonight in the draft forum has really two major changes. The first one is the removal of the option to special assess the improvements. That is really not industry standard really anywhere in the state anymore. And it has not been for a while. And I think what we've learned over the, the last several projects is that there, by special assessing, that does open the city up to some liability. So I guess with that, this will help alleviate that. And the second is to, the addition of language to clarify the letter of credit and insurance requirements to protect the city from, you know, if there's defaults on, on any of these, any of these things. So with that being said, we do have just a couple of updates here. When I was going through the final review, the C1 is, there was a typo, we have to remove Shady Beach as part of the thing we had incorporated from one we, we had gotten. And second was to authorize the, to utilize bituminous paving. And then the final was should, do we require a letter of credit or could there be any other options? That's something that City Attorney Gallstad had brought up for that. So I guess with that, we're looking for any feedback from the council that you might have on the proposed development agreement before we make any, the final revisions and hopefully bring it back for approval.
One of the things that I had in here is a question on, let's say we go through this process and approve it. Are we, just so we're understanding, if we approve it, does it go into effect right away? How does it, is, you know, a drop dead day, this is moving forward, this is what we're doing? Is, is that been discussed at all? Is that legalized, I guess, too, is, can this go into effect? Does it have to be 90 days after approval or when does it have to go?
It can go into effect immediately. I mean, I guess what we've, for example, excuse me, what we did with McBroder subdivision is we negotiated that particular development agreement. So, yeah, so, no, it, it doesn't require any kind of notice, public hearings, any of those types of things. So it'll go into effect soon as we approve it. And we could even, we could even add it to anything.
I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, so. Mr. Mayor, I have Mr. Reapel first though.
Oh, hit it.
I'm just looking at their insurance requirements and I think that should be increased. Just mine is a small business. They require a $1 million, $2 million limit. Here, they're $500,000, 1.5%.
I have no objection to that.
No objection to that. I think it should be increased. They're going to get hit with it anyway. The insurance companies are going to up them anyway, so we might as well do it on here.
Anything else, Tim?
That's it.
Mayor?
I know that the elimination of special assessments is a, is a big change. It would affect, if I was a developer, having done business in this community, using that special assessment mechanism to do these developments, it would require a lot of internal changes for me, even to how I went at the development. I might do smaller chunks and, because I would have to pay for all the infrastructure on the front end and then recoup that as I sell the lots. So I'd have to be more intentional about, you know, chunking out the development and, and getting it done that way. I see a huge advantage, by the way, to eliminating special assessments for the buyer because everything's known. And as Mr. Vedder has pointed out, now if it's part of the asset that I purchased, it can go against my regular home mortgage and, you know, all the normal stuff. So there's benefit to that. I see the benefit even to the developer because they don't want to be stuck in the middle of, why can't I pave my street? Here's why. The bids are coming in too high. You know, we couldn't have anticipated this. The, the concrete prices went crazy between when we started and now. And so that big element of unknown. So it's even at advantage for the developer to have those costs known right up front, build it into the price of the lot, be done with it. But it does require for them a change in how they do business. And it would be good for us to hear from our developers. I'm inviting that. And if anyone in the media picks up on it or whatever, we'd like to just get their feedback if this is something that they can step in and do good development. You know, the last thing we would ever want to do is create an impediment to doing development in our city. I don't think this would do that, but I'd like to hear feedback from all the developers best we can and make sure that we're going step by step in partnership with them to get a good result. Thanks.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I tend to agree with the mayor. You know, it is a, that's a pretty big shift. Even just getting into a development agreement was a big shift. But really, taking the, the special assessment option off the table is a pretty, that's a pretty big game changer, I think, in the development world. Not that it's not doable, not that, whatever. But I just think we better be prudent and think about all the ramifications going forward. You know, I agree with you. Maybe it's not the industry standard, but we also probably aren't adding developments at what it is in, you know, in the exurbs of Saint, or the Twin Cities, seven-county metro area, you know. There, the demand is much higher, the pace is quicker. Developers are turning, turning profit, or turning land, turning development much quicker. Even if you go to the other side of the river, development turns much quicker than it does here. The idea that, you know, keeping a developer on the hook for, you know, maybe 10 years out is, that's a big deal. And like I said, I don't, I'm not, you could look at my record, I'm not Mr. pro-developer on everything, but I just think we need to really take a step back. And obviously, I mean, there's problems with the special assessment process. We know that the defaulted property that we're trying to, or that the county is dealing with is kind of a, a ramification of that. I tend to think that it's kind of the exception that proves the rule of how we've done things. Maybe there's something that we could do to tweak it so that that sort of thing doesn't happen. I don't know. I just, my fear is that we have, we haven't had a new development for, added to the city for a while, you know, big, brand-new, out of nowhere, you know, annexed-in thing. And I would hate to put a wet blanket on something before it even starts. So I just, like I said, I want to make sure that we think through what, what that, what that means to developer, if that means bringing people in, if it means having Mr. Gorty go out and talk to developers or what. But like I said, I, I'm all for protecting the city's interest, but the city's interest is bigger than just the city's balance sheet. You know, it's, it's also, you know, the growth and, and all those type of things. We want people to build and develop here. And it's, it's an increasingly expensive game, you know, and you've got to have pretty deep pockets to do it. So that's my only advice, I guess.
Okay. Thanks.
Can Mills say anything? Comments?
Just one.
Nancy?
I, I wouldn't compare us to the Twin Cities.
Well, even Grand Forks. Grand Forks, they flip lots and you put a development out and they're, they fill them in two, two years.
Yes, but.
Here, you fill, you do that same thing. We've got developments that have been running on 15 years.
No, I, I do agree with you, but Thief River and Kirkston do, do developer-installed. And I think that they would grow at a similar pace.
Well, both of those guys are less population growth than we are in the last 10 years.
Yeah, so.
So don't, so maybe that's the case of point.
So that's the only reason why I'm saying that is, is they do not do city special assessed. So we really are truly one of the onlies in the state of Minnesota, even those our own size, Fergus Falls, you know, those types of places. Almost everybody does developer-installed, just because it is such a risk for the city to take that on. And residents and even people looking at the lots because they don't really know what their specials, I mean, we, we could do a city-installed special assessment type of a development agreement, but again, the only way it could reduce liability for the city is it would really tie up the developer again with a number of letters of credit and default and things like that. So I don't foresee it being a benefit to them, whether they install it themselves and could probably get better prices or be put on the hook. I mean, because we really would have to shore up our city-installed special assessment and I think it would be at the cost of the developer as well.
And my point is, isn't that we shouldn't go. My point is, is we just better make sure that we're very well aware
Yes.
of what the ramifications could be.
I, I totally agree.
We and the developers are aware of it.
Right, right. And like I said, I would hate to just have this come out and all of a sudden we're voting on it next week and
Correct.
It's, we've changed the, changed the rules of the game. I mean, if you're interested in developing property, you've probably been thinking about this property for quite some time, how are you going to finance it? I mean, you're talking millions and millions of dollars that go into these things. And to change the game on them in the last, you know, 30 seconds or whatever is, it's, it's not, it's just unfair maybe is, is what I'm saying. So like I said, having that dialogue, nothing gets, nothing's a problem with having that dialogue. Like I said, I, I think there are problems with, especially with price transparency and stuff, but I've also known that having larger-priced lots with everything built in can hamper the finance, financing of homes too because, I don't know if it's still the same, but I know in the past bankers have told me, we don't even look at specials. We just look at the price of the property, just the asset, and we don't care about that. So people are able to borrow more, whether it's good or bad, but that's, that's the real, I don't know if that's standard now, but I know, I just know there's lots of different things. Like there's, it's a complex issue and I don't want it to be just this binary thing or whatever.
Well, if you have two similar lots and one has 20,000 specials and one doesn't, your one that has 20,000 specials is going to be valued less. So, I mean, you can look at it that way. So I know you have something, Mr. Larson has something quick, then you can go back down.
Sure. I was just going to make a, make a comment. Good points brought up here on the special assessment policy. And I think it would be interesting to look at this through an EDA lens and is, is there a way to consider maybe some low-interest loans for, for infrastructure that, that would be potentially applicable to a residential developer to help to lower some of that upfront risk that they would take with, with installing all of, all of the municipal type of costs that are required here? And, you know, it's kind of trying to find a line between the, the two, also showing that we want to promote development. So something to think about there.
I understand what you're saying, but you're just basically taking it from one pocket to the next if still the city is on the hook, no, in the long run.
Potentially, but, you know, just to consider it as, as another option to maybe share, share the risk rather than pushing it from one side to the other fully.
Well, Mr. Larson thinks, it's a, that's a great point and not maybe the EDA directly funding these things, but we know that at the legislature, they're working on different development, infrastructure project or grants and all those type of things. It'd be interesting to know, obviously, we, the, the language isn't out there, but what happens if it needs to be the city, a city-sponsored infrastructure project? Then do we preclude ourselves from doing that? If, like, could we potentially sponsor a developer to get these funds from the state? So it's not just a one pocket to the other, it's actually getting stuff from the state that we might be missing out on from if we don't, you know, champion these projects ourselves or sponsor these projects ourselves. Like I said, I'm not opposed to getting rid of assessments or special assessment on these. I just want to make sure that we go and do it pretty clear-handed.
Mr. Murphy?
Mr. President. Yeah, and I, those are all good points, you know, and I, I do agree, but, you know, to a certain degree, there's really never any real good point to, to change a policy. You know, I mean, you, we got to kind of move what we move forward with, you know, with it at some point. And I do want to say that, you know, that we were able to negotiate it with that, that, that one that we had. And it was, so I mean, so it's not like it's set in stone. You know, there are certain things that we can, we can develop, negotiate and, and work with it because it's not really a one-size-fits-all. The other thing as far as like the costs, I'm not really sure in this particular area in this market what, what the cost savings is. But I know when I was down in the, working in the metro area, the, I guess, the, the rule of thumb or the thought was is that the developers would say that generally they could, the developer install costs for putting in infrastructure was roughly 20% less expensive than if it were city-installed, meaning we had to go out for competitive bids and do that. Whereas the developers are able to then negotiate with the, the contractors and that. And what they, at least down there, what they were experiencing was about a 20% savings over competitively bid city projects. So whether that translates
Maybe that's because they walk away from contracts down there. So it ends up the contractor that eats the, eats, that's why they're 20% less.
So anyways, so whether that translates up here or not, I guess, I, I don't know. And the one thing I, I will say as far as developers and bringing in, and developing here in the city, I will tell you that I have been contacted and spoken to developers who are, were hesitant to develop here in the city of East Grand Forks due to some of the not really knowing what the rules are and not having a clear set of what, what, what we expect of the city, what we expect of the developers. And to be quite honest, they also said that in their opinion, it seemed like it was geared towards benefiting local developers versus somebody who might not be a local developer. So I guess I can't predict this for certain, but I do think that this might open up some of our potential development pool by having known, known rules and known costs. So that's all I have to say.
So, you know, Mayor, you mentioned feedback, so, and Mr. Murphy's looking at moving this forward to a vote. Are you asking this not be put for a vote next week or is this had enough time for that, what you're asking for? Because I just want to make sure because I know Mr. Demers made the comment too. I just want to make sure that we're
It does seem a little abrupt.
Moving this forward to a vote, but also making sure that you allow your request for comments.
Yeah, it feels a little abrupt to, to have this unveiled today and have it go to a vote in one week. It feels a little abrupt to me. And, and I, I'm also with Mr. Demers. I don't oppose it. I think there's a lot of upside to what we're doing here for all parties, including the developers, including the final end-users of those lots, including the city. And even some of the contractors might prefer to bid on a, on a private development to just feel more comfortable with that. We want to talk and maybe it's in here. I didn't get all the way through every detail. I skimmed the document, but I didn't get all the way through. I trust that we have the ability from an engineering standpoint to oversee the construction of these private infrastructure and to make sure it's, you know, compaction and dimension and everything's just to what we're expecting. Because eventually that will all get turned over to the city for
Oh, yes.
maintenance and whatnot. And so I, I'd like to make sure that has a thorough review also from our engineer, from legal, to make sure, yep, 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 I can do it like that. So I feel like there are, there are just a lot of, a lot of little details and I would like to not have it go splat to the developers also.
So you're asking to bring it back to another work session and then to a vote?
Yeah. And even maybe put it out, hopefully the media can pick up on this. It's a, it's a good change. We want to be pro-development, but we want to have it be, you know, maybe more toward this, this way. more toward this, this way. But a good chance to invite the developers in. And I think we're going to hear some, some good things about this. Maybe some, some red flags will be raised and maybe we can even roll those in also, tweak it a little bit to their, to their preference. So I would feel better about that. Please.
It's up to you, Mr. Murphy.
That's fine.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for him? See none. I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by Reapel, second by Johnson. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.